You know what they did? They took the parking lot, parking lot hatchback and they come out. The fence is parallel to the parking lot, not the street. And, okay, it looks nice. But it looks like Bear Road. You know, this fence out on Bear Road there?
Yeah.
You know, that same thing going into the guy's estate. But I thought, and other people I talked to about like Zetti, that we could have some small bushes in front between the fence and the road up a different fence. So it looks nice.
How much of a gap do you have there?
It changes because the road goes in and the fence is parallel to the parking lot.
How close is it closest?
I don't know. Maybe 10 feet.
Two feet.
No, no, it's a lot.
I guess more than two feet because the block will take that out.
I know, probably. Yeah. But I don't think that's a problem. Besides, the guys can turn the blade, they can go the other way with the snow. But anyhow, what do you think of it? Looks nice, huh?
It looks nice, but I think they could have turned the trees off.
But they took down 18 of our trees that were on our property. Never has said boo.
Did they have to get our approval on the fence or did anybody do that?
And you can put it up there?
The ordinances pertaining to fences are very few and very vague. And I instructed the planning commission to research that, which they are actively doing.
But they could do it without getting permission?
Absolutely.
The heights.
There's basically three ordinances, very short, vague ordinances pertaining to fences. One of them talks about the height, one of them talks about the material, and I think that the other...
Tells you, you can put it right on the...
On the line.
Right on the line.
That's about all we have written on fences. There is no permit.
Spike fences though, too.
Say that again.
Spike fences.
I've never seen that in this sort of New York.
Spike fences, you know.
Oh, spike fences.
Like you don't think they're...
There's one over on...
On Evergreen.
Evergreen.
I think that's where he put that up there. Two residents were on the side and back and forth. Then he put that fence up and we made him cut it.
Right, it was too high and too close to the wall.
But behind the house, they could...
You can actually have a six-foot fence to the rear and three feet to the side, oh, sorry, three feet to the front and six feet to the side. When you get to the front yard, things start to change.
I like to pull those up. It's not very much.
I like those all members.
There you go. Is this a direct replacement? Is this a direct replacement or do we have to hunt back? I believe it's a direct replacement.
Pull out what I need.
Yep.
Go after like publicly store your...
Be historical data.
All right, it is 7:30. Please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of members.
Mr. Cassette?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mr. Major?
Here.
Mrs. Surratt?
Here.
Mrs. Yatch?
Here.
I made a motion that we excuse Bill Donovan.
Second. Oh.
Oh, and Anthony.
And Ross. Second for that? Sure. Second. All in favor? Aye. opposed? Acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting.
Make a motion, will you waive the reading and accept as read?
Second. All in favor? Notifications of meetings and events to the public and news media. Louper.
We have a meeting next month before the council meeting, third or Tuesday.
Finances?
I'd like to schedule something for September, so if members of finance begin in touch with me and we can work something out. Anytime's fine.
All right, legislation. All right, naturally. Police?
We have our regular scheduled meeting tonight, but Russ is involved with a program out in Middletown. So he submitted his report in writing and we meet next month.
Streets? Boards, A and B?
We meet the first Thursday of the month, 7:00 PM here at Village Hall.
Streets, oh, Streets meets next council. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. It's a meeting. Yeah, it's a meeting.
Planning member was not here. He told me we are changing our meeting to the fourth Wednesday of the month due to conflict. And our next meeting is actually the third Wednesday. I don't know why. It's August 21st, 7:00 at Village Hall.
Boards on appeals?
Nothing.
Western Reserve Fire District?
We will be having our meeting next month. We normally don't meet in August, but they call a meeting, Joe, next Wednesday, 14th, 7th.
Forest Board? And Hine Memorial? Quote from the mayor, I really don't have anything to report. Go see the fiscal. Okay. When does that...
Yeah, it'd be our regular scheduled...
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna still have a meeting on the 4th meeting.
Yeah, Mark wants to get some stuff. Yeah.
Tim, did you want your court report accepted?
No, really.
Motion to accept the mayor's court report?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Quote from fiscal officer.
Okay, I'm circulating around and this is the bill. Bill, you'll note the last item on there is a check to Bob Eddy in the amount of $23,250. The thing is in, car is in, Russ will go get it here tomorrow.
Now the state's dropped the price.
Yes. Number two is the first advance for the second half of our state's taxes have been received in the amount of $44,000, $37,000 into the general fund, $7,000 into the police fund. And we received our bill from RLM Electric for $118 for the isolating of the receptacle that's on the list to be prepared. End of report.
Motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
What's isolating the...
The Celebrate Pole and... Oh, so that's the thing that...
RLM did.
He disconnected what was out there. Should that be charged back to Celebrate Pole?
Celebrate Pole? You could try it, we're still gonna pay them first.
Why?
Oh, we don't want them hanging on the line or something.
Why?
Well, if they're not mixed up in it, then it should get paid.
Or they just build the wrong people up. Why should we do that?
Did we get an electric bill for the...
We did get an electric bill for, I believe, middle of June until the middle of July, $101. Usually that bill is $35 a month, just so the service is out there. And then for the month of July, for that span of time, the bill was $101. So if you figure that out, it's basically a $500 expense that we have each year to have it down there.
So you're speaking of the secondary bill that comes for 308 and a half, South Main Street?
Yes.
Okay, so we have...
That's electrical, sure as hell back.
So you're speaking $500 for what we pay for Celebrate Pole, basically. And this is in no way meant to be antagonistic because, you know, we love having Celebrate Pole, but can we also get, so we know the electric cost us about $500. Can we also get some kind of an estimate on what the village donates in as much as our street department workers and our police officers who work those two days? And again, this is not to be antagonistic, it is simply because we have been sort of looked down on people's noses that we don't donate anything to this, you know, yearly event. And we actually do. And I think that if we had an idea of what the number was, that we could say, that's our donation, basically. The only thing that we withdrew over the past few years was the contribution to the fireworks because of our budget situation. But we still give a substantial amount of money to this and we think it's a great event. We want them to continue doing it, but we would appreciate them, not some of them, some of them saying things like, "The village doesn't do anything or contribute anything."
I think that's a very good point.
Get those figures from Russ for the...
I can get the hours, make a figure.
Right.
But getting back to RLM, I mean, we didn't do it, unauthorized work, and we had it fixed. And I think Celebrate Pole came here and they apologized, but I think they should also apologize with some money that they've perfected.
Who hired them? Who hired them? You hired you. We hired them, we got the...
RLM.
You hired them. Yeah. We hired them. It's our responsibility. That's right.
What are you gonna pass on?
We'll try to pass one on, that's all we can do at this point. All right, quote from deputy clerk, I don't know. Quote from zoning administrator.
Okay, as you can see, I submitted the zoning administrator's report, so we are taking in some funds, which is looking nice. We actually gave Rex Fisher demolition permit on his home, 323 South Main. That was actually voted upon at the architecture review board meeting. The way that the zoning ordinance is written, it says in there that there's a 90-day cooling off period for demolitions of historic homes. The homeowner presented it as a undue burden on him waiting the 90 days because of construction period and weather. So we had a special architectural review board meeting and they voted to grant him the demolition permit short of the 90-day period. Okay? So that's what that is. I'm also sent out three violations and about compliance from all three. So that worked out well.
So what you're telling me is we have authority to prohibit people from doing what they want in their home?
That's correct.
Historical.
That's correct. And the way it's actually written is may, the word "may" is in there. It says when there is a home of historical significance, the architecture, the board, which is the architectural review board, may impose a 90-day cooling off period.
Cooling off for what? What's the... I understand. Let me ask you, what's the ramifications if I say screwing up something like that?
I don't have an answer for you on that. That being said, the 90-day cooling off period, and this was actually commented on by John Jurgen, and he said that the 90 days, in one way, it's for the homeowner to exercise all possible options for saving the project. But in another way, it's also a cooling off period for the community to try and find other solutions. And that was the, that's what he had said, that was a comment that he made, and I thought it was pretty poignant. So.
Sorry, I write this.
It's the way it's written in the zoning and the word "may" is used, so.
One more.
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the zoning.
What's happening with our friend, Mr. Eisenstein?
That is...
Any litigation?
In what way?
So we're putting together the case.
You are? He never made an application.
Absolutely not.
And he didn't deserve to go to court?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so it's been in litigation or it will be in litigation?
I made the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Quote from listener, and obviously not hearing Reggie what he said about the tree stuff. Quote from chief police and street commissioner. With the rating?
Motion to accept the report of the chief.
Back up to the street tree that we... In the minutes, it talked about a car being damaged.
That was a different tree.
Oh, okay, because the insurance said the homeowners, the insurance company wasn't paying it, they needed to go after the homeowner. That's not the tree in question?
No.
Okay.
May I?
Yeah.
When I spoke with Will Lewis, the owner of the old farmer's bank building, that was the tree in front of his property that a limb fell on and car damaged, he had been contacted by the homeowner, or by the car owner, okay, he injured. And he said, he told me, he turned it over to his insurance, and his insurance was taking care of it, and that he had no further dealings with it.
So then he's taken responsibility for that tree?
I guess you could say that.
A question on the street thing, he said they need to discuss sealing the hall light. What's the hall light?
Parking light, yeah. He would like to do that. Our guys do it.
Oh, our guys do it.
Well, so he called me and he said we found, remember we said we needed a trailer desperately? He said he found one for under $1,400, he doesn't remember the taxes, everything. Talking to the one on the street, and he said fine, so he's gonna be coming to you for that.
What's the status of the truck?
That's what we just talked about. The new truck that we're getting for the police department?
The car, police car?
We're talking about the car.
Right.
We're talking about the truck. We talked about, you know, the need for a truck replacement?
No, we're buying a police car.
He was only speaking of a trailer, not a truck, that needed to be replaced.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I think down the road, he may be looking at a truck because is it a '79?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's like old.
Okay, that's what I heard, that there was a truck that needed to be replaced?
But that's not what this is.
Not in this year's budget.
That's correct.
Okay.
Do we accept this stuff? Motion by Linda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I did tell, if you heard, I texted Russ and asked him if I would be the quickest for payment, and he said Butch McCreary would be the quickest.
His opinion.
Say that again.
When you were gone, we said we wanted to pick the person to get this done quickest for the payment, and he thought Butch McCreary would be the fastest to get it done. Which is the lowest paid also?
Oh, yeah. Nobody got a date, right?
No.
Hey, when did you guys decide to buy a trailer? Just now.
Oh, yeah?
Talk about the streets, now you know. Quote from engineer. Nothing? While we got the, everything's on the table. Are we gonna pass this tonight or are we gonna wait in the road a little? Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't get a peek.
That's okay.
Everything is...
You're gonna lay on your face.
So everything was okay with this project? Everything was good and scary?
Yep.
We're good to go?
Yep. Oh, we need to date. You know, we're gonna start. All right, reports from outstanding committees? Just for information, it costs $140,000 to pave one mile today. 10 years ago, it was $50,000 when we were doing all these streets. $140,000. Now, Russ was, Russ knows the length of all these different streets. I was gonna add them all up and tell you what this cost us to the mile, but I never got the time to speak. Two times, yeah. Reports from outstanding committees of counsel, finance, wage audit, and insurance.
We don't have a report.
Legislation and policy?
Nothing.
Police and fire?
Nothing.
Streets, sidewalks, and drainage? Louper. Louper? Reports from boards, planning commission, we did have a meeting last month, we did talk, like Dave said, a little bit about the fence stuff to restructure that because it was very vague. We had to talk more about the historic preservation thing that we're working on. And we think it was only discussed at that meeting. And we said our next meeting is the 21st of August at 7:00. 21st of August? Yes. For planning, correct. Boards on appeals? Nothing. Architecture review board?
We discussed it in the zoning administration board. We had a special meeting in reference to 323 South Main. And like I said, it was voted upon in the architecture review board, voted to waive the 90-day cooling off period for the demolition permit there.
Did he say when he was gonna start the demolition on the home?
No, he's not given that. Although, just so everyone knows, he will be demolishing the home and building a new home that will be historically accurate.
Forest Board? Nothing. Hine Memorial? Western Reserve? Did you get a report from...
No, but on Russ's report, it says catching up on Hine Fund work, a sinkhole. Know anything about that? Okay. So then tree trimming, shrub removal. I was concerned about the sinkhole.
Do you know where that is? No. Western Reserve Fire District?
We will be meeting next Wednesday, and we're hoping our September meet will be at our new station. So it should be ready to be open in September. So we wanna tour everything for our September meeting.
Reports from special committees? Communications from residents?
The sinkhole is right in front of the Presbyterian Church at East Combs Center right here.
Okay.
Four by four, but I think it's the one we're talking about. It's all...
Mary Angelab, Autumn Monley. When I heard you talking about that the man complaining about the bush was blocking his vision, made me think, some years ago, my husband sent a letter to council about the trees. As you're coming on 170 from the center of the village and heading, when you get to Riverside Drive, you cannot see that light until you're on it. It's my perception that over the years, those trees have made that lighting less visible. I don't know who owns the trees, but I think it's almost, it's becoming a safety hazard, I think, now you're so close to that light before you can see whether it's red or green. So...
They had to brush it up several years ago.
I noticed it too, several years ago, and they trim the trees, but every year they grow, of course, and it's happening again.
I think it's worse than it was before. Now, right now, they seem to have gotten very good. Before, anybody comes and asks them because they're ready to zoom through and...
One month.
I brag that very frequently, I...
Thank you for that reminder. Can we let Russ know or someone about it? Are those the property of the Hine's?
Double strip.
Double strip.
Controversial double. All right, anyone else who comments on residents? Okay, any new business? Any old business? Motion to ordinances and resolutions?
Who wants to vote first? You have one first? I have one. Okay, motion for the advice of our solicitor, D'Amelito, to remove the two trees on 170 at 4 Riverside and 413 South Main. As deemed to be unsafe, as soon as Ohio Edison determines the handling of the attached pole at 413 South Main?
It's right between the two, I couldn't say.
Okay, so let's not include that part. The handling of the attached pole, period.
And again, I ask who's gonna pay for that?
The one that's on our property will have to pay for it. The one that's on their property, they'll have to pay.
I'm against that, paying for it.
But if it's on our property...
What do you mean our property? Between the sidewalk and the street? The double strip? We got an ordinance that says it's a homeowner's responsibility, like the sidewalks.
If it's the homeowner's tree, then they need to pay for it, but if it's our tree, we need to pay.
What do you mean our tree?
Because they were just discussing a tree on that area, that it was deemed that that was village property.
Right, we've already, we already have past precedents where we paid for the tree on that property.
Cut it out, we're gonna go broke.
This particular property, it has been deemed by our, if I'm not mistaken, please correct me if someone knows, our previous solicitor to be our property.
I didn't know that, please.
Current solicitor?
I thought it was...
I wish it was here.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was...
A few years ago.
So it's already been deemed that that was our property and we're responsible for the trees on that property?
It's still a issue of safety, no matter whose property it is, Joe. Good, take it down, but who are you gonna charge? Who's gonna pay for it?
Well, if we can charge it, we will. If we can't, we can't.
What do you mean if we will? At least they're...
They're deemed as their tree.
We got a responsibility to. Okay.
Yeah, but like Dave said, he said that's ours. The other one...
I'm gonna make a second on one this motion.
Okay, so this is to take down both trees. Have they written one second? No, I think it's not written right.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not written right.
Is that something?
It has to be something that we're gonna notify the owner that it's unsafe, and if he doesn't take it, then we will take it and charge it.
Now you're talking.
Okay, but don't you see that as problematic weight time? Because Anthony is saying, our solicitor's telling us, it's unsafe, we need to do something about it. If we notify and we give this person time to dally, to say they want to get someone else to do it, we want to get several estimates...
We had the same issue with property and owner, but in 170?
No, it's actually not the same.
It was exactly the same. We sort of noticed it was unsafe, we told him, give him X amount of time and take it down, but we were gonna take it down and assess it, and he did it.
In that situation, we had things falling into the street. In this situation, we had, this is the second part now, to get hit by something coming off that tree. We have backed up traffic sometimes now, sitting all the way out there with people lined up.
We can't do anything regardless because it's tied to the pole.
The other one...
Well, that's the only thing...
I'm saying we could do one. I'm 100% behind doing the other one. The second one, you need to serve a, you need to notice, this is the bathroom, take advantage of...
He's already been told. Yeah, but he gave it written, he had to give it written notice for something.
Correct. I agree with what Linda's saying, I think we need to notify the owner of the secretary that he better climb on board with us to take that street for place consideration.
Within the next, you know, 10 days, or we're gonna take it down.
So let's amend the motion to say... Do you want me to read the whole thing over, Andrew? Okay, I can write it down under it too.
Here's what I put.
Okay.
To remove trees at 4 Riverside and 413 South Main as deemed unsafe. Period.
Okay.
So whatever else you wanted to say, we're ahead of it.
As soon as Ohio Edison determines the handling of the attached pole and notification to the two residents of the action being taken.
No, that doesn't put it on them, you're just notifying them that they're responsible. You have to get the responsibility on them, and if they don't act, that's to be rewritten entirely.
The responsibility is going to be on them when they are billed for it.
You'll be notified.
For the one.
But they have to be notified in that.
You will not pay? We've already, so you know about past precedents, story decises, it's already been established. It's not gonna happen.
That one we have.
Guaranteed, they're not gonna pay. They know that they do not own that tree. They know it.
We were gonna go to litigation of the street and we thought, hey, just take it down. It wasn't worth it.
Correct.
So we are gonna pay for that one. It's the other one that's gonna be billed to the taxpayer.
I think so. He's already been contacted, I'll write.
If it's deemed his property.
It seems that it's gonna go that way because of what happened with the limb hitting a car. So it, it seems that it's gonna go his way. Yeah, and I can tell you this, just from talking to him, he, he is not interested in taking it down himself because like I said, he has passed blame to Aqua Ohio. So, I, I think that you have, you have the, is that a tree service there? These trees are literally seven feet apart. I mean, they are in it, right there. So you've got a truck stopping traffic.
Yeah.
He's cutting one. He's gonna cut the other and it's done. That's what I'm saying, I, I say we take it down and just put it on his taxes, bill him, it's done. End of story. He's already been made notice, we'll write him a letter and tell him this is the pathway forward. End of story.
I agree.
We're not giving him the option to delay, to blame somebody else. It must be done to protect the public safety. He's gonna pay for it, period.
And put a time in there. Put a ten day time. He has ten days.
Ten days is whenever Ohio Edison says we can get to it.
And then when Bizzetta Tree goes and does it.
Otherwise, we could be looking at something really ugly. I mean, stop and think about it. Liability?
No.
Refusal to be insured by a company?
There.
If we, let me just, uh, can we pull it out right now? The tree that's in question, the price of that, if we, if we, just give me a second, um, was minor in comparison to the one that is actually ours. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front. Just give me a second.
By the way, Riverside. Oh, by the old bank building. Yeah, right up there. Yeah, oh, yeah, I saw that.
And that's the one that's waiting right on the corner of the street. I mean, it is.
So is the tree on the pole or is the pole on the tree? Ohio Edison, we finally may have taken it down.
Sorry, it is. Last thing. Okay, so here's what we have. This is the breakdown. Um, the large old maple at four Riverside is one thousand eighty-five dollars to cut down. It's one hundred and seventy to grind out the stump and one hundred and seventy to haul it away. The, the tree in front of the old Farmers Bank Building is five hundred and thirty-five dollars, one hundred and seventy to grind the stump and one hundred and seventy to take it away. So you can see that that tree is half the price of the other tree.
Are we financially, or not financially, but morally, all we need is to do the stump grinding? All we have is.
Not necessary.
Homeowner, if he wants that, and Spockly, he should pay for it.
That's fair.
We're gonna drop the tree as soon as.
Isn't that what happened at the other house? I think he, we led it, he went in and then ground it down?
No, no, it's still there.
I was, what, I was just, uh?
It's still there, stump's still there.
That's up to you guys.
Mark, if you don't take the stump off, the person's lost.
How much was it for the stump?
One seventy per tree. Hundred and seventy dollars per tree, grind the stump, one hundred and seventy to haul away all the lumber.
So the motion is simply to remove the trees?
It's, it's whatever you guys want. I, like I said, I had it, uh, itemized out. It's up to you.
The previous tree on his property, we paid for it.
I don't really answer.
That's the same guy that owns the house on the corner, no? Yeah. So we're talking about another six hundred dollars?
Five hundred and thirty-five for the, for the tree in front of the, the old Farmers Bank.
Well, if you have the stumps ground and removed, how much is that?
Um, one seventy and one seventy, so three forty.
Per tree?
Three forty per tree to haul and grind.
So, seven hundred dollars, so.
No, it's actually more than that. So three forty plus five, thirty-five, uh, eight seventy-five.
I, I say we drop the trees and let that move around.
That's up to you guys.
Who's gonna pay for dropping the trees? We're not paying for the tree on our property and they're not paying for our property. So what is our motion?
To remove the trees at four Riverside and four thirteen South Main as deemed unsafe pending Ohio Edison's determination of attached pole and notification of residents of the actions to be taken.
Say it again.
To remove the trees at four Riverside and four thirteen South Main as deemed unsafe and pending Ohio Edison's determination of attached pole and notification of residents of action to be taken.
I want that also said for the advice of our solicitor.
It's notification and, uh.
Financial responsibility.
Financial responsibility for the removal to be, the cost to be placed on the owner. I think we have to get that in there.
Cost to the owner, the name encompasses up to, that's a good way to say it. That way we can pay if we.
I think that you really can deal with the way that you wanna handle this financially after the fact. Right now, what, what our goal is here is to get them down because of the safety issue and liability issues. And we're doing this because our solicitor has said that this is what we need to do. Okay? So that's why I want that documented. We can deal with all of those things later, you know, whether it's going to be assessed if the person doesn't wanna pay it.
No, that's probably wrong. You have to put everything in the package. You can't just take it down and then say we're gonna assess them. You have to notify.
Well, yours can't be assessed because it's not their tree.
Right.
The other person.
If the other, the other guy, the other person pays.
Well, other entities do this sort of thing all the time. They make assessments for sidewalk repairs. They make assessments for tree removal. They make assessments for all kinds of things. So what we are trying to accomplish here is to take care of the aspect of this, for Ant, what Anthony had to say. So I think that's the most important thing that we're doing here tonight.
Is there any, is there anything in there about financial responsibilities?
I don't have anything written there about the financial responsibilities because I would assume that can be taken care of in the notification line. But I'll, I'll write it.
I wonder if you put another thing, I can write a containing, uh, containing a statement that the owner was responsible.
In the letter?
In the letter. Put that in there, to put in our motion since you want everything so inclusive, that we're gonna put notice to the owner that he's responsible and be assessed if he doesn't take it down.
Let's get to the point of view of resolution for all this stuff.
Exactly.
Really, it is. Here's what it says again. To remove the trees at four Riverside, to remove trees at four Riverside and four thirteen South Main as deemed unsafe and pending Ohio Edison's determination of attached pole and notification of residents of action to be taken as per solicitor D'Appolito's opinion. Is that sufficient?
No, it doesn't, doesn't assert it all?
This is certain, is that sufficient for your motion?
That's sufficient for my motion.
No, I don't think it is at all. You have to put something in that, notification to the owner and be assessed if, if he doesn't take it down.
I think that we could, we could argue, we could continue to argue about how we're gonna handle the financial end of this, but that doesn't even have to be finished tonight. We can wait until we talk to Anthony about that part. What we wanna do is take care of the important business of removing those trees, okay, because, you know, the other part can be done later. We can make that determination later. What we can't do is undo something worse happening there while we wait and make this determination.
I don't think anyone's disputing that. I think all we need to do is put a line in. Yeah, put a sentence in there. Be responsible. Like Bob said, yeah. Look.
What's wrong with the, the?
You mean for the one resident?
Yeah, for the one.
I like, I like the line of responsibility. Yeah, because that covers us if we're responsible and it covers them if they're responsible. It's just one more line. And I thought about my, my soap opera about no stumps and laws, just take, because that would, that would be ugly indeed. Not just aesthetically, but legally.
So what's the? Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
To remove trees at four Riverside and two, and to remove trees at four Riverside and four thirteen South Main as deemed unsafe and pending Ohio Edison's determination of attached pole and notification of residents of action to be taken as per solicitor D'Appolito's opinion with financial responsibility for removal falling on the property.
Not both property owners, just the one at four.
He asked if the money was responsible or it would fall on you or the other one then, so the property owner would pay for it.
So I thought the one tree was.
Right, and your property owner.
All right. Is that, are you happy with that?
I am.
So Linda made the motion. Chris, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, other motions, ordinances, resolutions?
Paying?
Oh, paying, okay. All right, if you wanted, Chris, that's for you to sign it, if we're, if we're gonna do it.
Gonna make a motion?
Okay, give me that. Okay. Based upon, this is from Gary. Based upon review, I gave everybody a copy of it. And the bids received July thirty-first for the dump stuffy projects. MS Consultants recommended award of the project to the apparent owner of Butch McCreary with a base bid amount of ninety-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, pass me yours. I'll, I'll get the, you, the, start the.
Other motions, ordinances, resolutions? All right, so second, third readings. Presentation of the bills.
Motion to pay the bills as presented?
Hey, wait a minute. She always does.
No, that's okay, I was reading. I was a newbie. I was reading.